No, I am on a podcast.
Hey, hey, everybody. Thank you, everybody. We are welcome. Welcome back to Knowledge is Power Podcast Live and I'm Tony Redford, your host. And I have my co-host with me, Madonna Sherwood, my co-host, and I've got one that's missing. Francis Lockins, who's now with us right there. She may slide on in here in a few. So we want to welcome you all here tonight. And we've got a special guest tonight. We're talking to a, we'll be speaking with a candidate for Beaumont, Texas City Council at Large. He's going to join us in a few minutes, but I hope you're keeping staying safe. The COVID-19 is really rapidly running around, and we want to make sure that you are being safe. Take care of yourself. Wear your mask, keep your distance. And also, we're going to have the Health Director from Beaumont and Port Arthur. They're going to be joining us in another week or two. But we've got guests all filled out for the month of January and February. And oh, I've got a super, super guest that's going to be joining us on next Tuesday. If you're around, please join us. The legendary Coach from Port Arthur, Texas Lincoln High School, the home of the Bomabees. Joe Coach, Joe Washington Senior, along with Little Joe Washington Junior and Kenny Washington will be joining us next Tuesday at eight o'clock, right here on Knowledge is Power Podcast Live. We're going to be visiting with those guys and we're going to just have a good time. And on Sunday, we're going to have another candidate, A.J. Turner, who is running for City Council at Large. He will be joining us next Sunday. So yeah, be, come, join us. We'll be right here on Sunday, Tuesdays and Sundays at eight o'clock. So I look forward to seeing you. So are you ready to get this thing running and going?
I am ready. I'm ready.
To make this thing happen? All right. We'll be right back. Welcome to Knowledge is Power Podcast Live with your host, Tony Redford, and my co-host, Madonna Sherwood and Francis Lockins.
Knowledge is Power Podcast Live starts now.
Hey, we are back. Okay, great. Our guest tonight is running for, he's a candidate for City Council at Large for the city of Beaumont, Texas. We welcome James Ella Junior. Hey, James, how are you, sir?
Pretty good. How are y'all doing?
Great. And along with my co-host, Madonna Sherwood. James is running. James is putting, throwing his hat in the ring. Now officially, he has not filed, but I know he, he's knocking on the door probably this week. Candidate for City at Large, at Large, City Councilman, City at Large here of Beaumont, Texas. James, tell us, tell us, tell, tell our audience a little bit about you. We, we, we don't, we know, I've seen you at City Council meeting. I've seen you on your webpage, your website, Facebook, and you, you've really been heads up on, on what's going on in the city. And you've been really, you and I worked on a project getting some folks up there, water out of the yard. You and I have worked a couple of deals together and helped some folks get their lives together. And, and James, you've been with us on this show before, but we never was in this, this particularly.
Type of forum.
Yeah, type of forum, yes. But we, you're here with us and we want to know all about you. I mean, not just me, but the, the community of Beaumont like to know. James is, it's never ran before, but James, tell us a little bit about you. Go ahead, James.
Okay. I'm Beaumont born and raised. I'm here forty-two years of normal citizen, normal voice like everybody else out here, trying to make a difference though, in my own right. I started a Beaumont, Texas Information Station on Beaumont, on Facebook to highlight things going around Beaumont. It turned into more of a, not complaint, but more of awareness page about things and issues that I started seeing through complaints from citizens that weren't being answered by the, the current council and it was current council at the time as well, because a lot of the incumbents that are now there were incumbents for years before and years, the, the year that I started the page. I started getting disheartened with all the problems that we're facing across the board and across Beaumont, not just in my ward or in your ward or in the next ward. It was all of Beaumont that had some of the same issues that were being suffered from going on, you know, crime rate, infrastructure, not just potholes, but we got water lines burst in here and there, poor maintenance issues. We replaced streets without tackling the under, you know, the, under, you know, sewers, the waters underneath, but you put a brand new concrete street on. So I started that page and it, it, it started getting to me about what we needed to do. I started thinking about running probably about a year into the page being developed. And then I said, now I'm to this point right here where being more involved in the community and hearing more people that have problems that aren't being addressed has brought me to the point of that I want to run and really be up there to make sure that I have a foot in what actually goes on in Beaumont compared to just a, a citizen looking out. I want to be the voice for the citizens that, that have the problems.
James, I have a question. Since you started your page and you guys have been able to identify some of those problems, how do you feel like you'll be able to tackle some of those issues the way you said those incumbents hadn't been addressing those issues?
One thing is I've been actually proactive even as a citizen calling TCEQ. I've been calling the city. I've been calling entities like Entergy whenever I hear from citizens. As a normal citizen myself, I hear more from citizens or probably just the same amount as some of the councilmen hear from citizens each day about problems that they're being troubled with, or they've been plagued by for so many years that hasn't been addressed by the council that are actually getting paid and elected to do their jobs. I'm getting the same calls. So I'm going out there and I'm already doing it for free and I'm already doing it just because it's the right thing to do. It, it's, it's, it's sad that we have to elect somebody that doesn't hear from us or doesn't speak for us like they should be speaking for us. It, it, it seems like, I got Amazon, I got Alexa in the background trying to tell me about a special deal. I guess I'm, I'm missing. Sorry about that. So like I said, I, I'm already out there doing what I can do. And this was also before, before I even thought about running. I was already calling and, and putting in my word. Some people, hell, the, the mayor of Beaumont told me at one point in time, whenever I ended up getting up there just with a regular idea that, that, that was more calming to their ears per se, then it was like, oh, Mr. Ella, I didn't, you know, so sudden expected, you know, I didn't think that I was going to hear, you know, I didn't think that I was going to hear something basically so nice from me because I'm on it. I, I, I don't have nothing to shy from, to run away from. Whenever I'm out there putting in a word, I'm not going to butter your toast, you know, per se. I'm going to hit it hard. And I was hitting it hard before. I, I wanted to be a councilman and I'm going to hit it hard the same way. It's not a job for me. It's an ear for you and a voice for you, for me to get out there and go do my job. This is supposed to be done by the ones that are in the seat right now, but yet they're obligated to a buddy buddy or a favoritism system.
Let me ask you, with the current work that you're doing, what are the main topics of your platform that you're running on?
It, it's going to sound like everybody else's because it's a big issue right now. We have infrastructure issues, of course, all that's going on. Crime rate, I don't care what they say the crime rate is normal or it's down or this and that. It, it's not, in my opinion, it's not, oh, well, you know, there was thirty homicides back in ninety-seven and now there's only twenty. That doesn't make it better. You know what I'm saying? Like, like it, it, just because there's a deduction. For last year, we were experiencing almost two murders a month, you know? I mean, it, it, it's ridiculous. Some of the things that they say, oh, well, no, you know, we had higher, you know, back, but, okay, that's murder. Yeah, we, we, we had a higher murder rate in ninety-seven compared to now, but as in, what about assaults? What about rape? Or what about just wiling out? You know, we're not having any checks and balances to things. Hell, I've called the, the police enough on different issues, just for safety wise, and it's not being addressed. But yet you can bet that you have the same police that are sitting, I mean, and I'm talking about in traffic. You have the same police that are sitting up under the freeways, ticketing you for seatbelts and, and inspection stickers, but yet you got guys riding on motorcycles, popping wheelies down Lucas with ATVs, and those are not being addressed. And that's street traffic, you know, traffic calls, right? So like I say, wiling out is what I mean by that is, is individuals that are just doing whatever the heck they want to do. We have infrastructure issues. We don't have transparency. And I know different candidates have said basically some of the same things. And it's, I'm all for everybody having the same agendas. It's because these are actual topics that need to be addressed, that are being neglected by the ones that are in office right now. So I mean, of course, everybody's going to have somewhat of the same, same things going on. I do want to have more of community involvement. I have property over here in the north end of town that I would like to see myself. I'm going to develop it a little bit more. It's residential, so I mean, it's not commercial. I'm not going to run a business out of it, nothing like that. But I want to involve the community. I'm, I'm right down the way from Plinett Village and Maida. I would love to see more involvement from partnerships with like HEB with the, the parking lot over there. Or if that didn't pan out, I want to host it over at my own site over here. I've got about an acre of property where I can do a farmer's market each month. I have Councilman, Councilman Mike Getz had said, oh, well, we already have that. We already have a farmer's market over on College. Yeah, but what about the north end? What about the south end? What about the east end? You have things that are catering to, you know, one demographic in one way. You have things catering to one neighborhood and forgetting everybody else. What I just posted on my, my Facebook page at Beaumont Texas Information Station is that when you bring up the whole city, then you bring up everybody to, to walk on their own. You cannot continue to cater to one either race. You can't cater to one income. You can't cater to who's going to vote for you. You need to cater to everybody. And that's also how I feel that being an at-large candidate, I can have, you know, more involvement with everybody compared to just one ward that, that you may specify, and, and I'll say this, white guy, right? If, if I'm, if I'm in the west end, it might be predominantly white, then you're okay. You might just be the white candidate and you might run for that, that ward and you might speak for everybody in that area. If it's predominantly, I'm saying predominantly white, which I think it is in that, that particular area. But now as in, I don't speak for the white vote. I don't speak for the black. I don't speak for the Hispanic. I want to speak for the all vote. Every single individual. I've always been around every type of culture, every type of race, every type of income level, high, low, and in between all my life. There's never been, and you cannot talk to anybody that ever know, you know, has known me. And, and you can't talk to them and, and have them say that you can put me in a certain category. I'm all around, all and about. And like I say, I think that that's where I can make a better influence at the City Council is because I have that multi-level of interactions with different, I mean, growing up, I mean, I did wrong. I, I was involved with all kinds of different gangs and everything else. And then now coming this route, eh, eh, as a, as a, as a, what do they say in the Bible, right? As a boy, you crawl and as a man, you walk. Well, I'm at that walking stage where I actually have now experienced crawling. I've progressed and now I'm walking. I want to be more involved with the community to uplift the youth. I don't have kids. But I want to see what I didn't see growing up is more heavily, and, and I mean heavily, interactions with the youth from lesser areas, because if you don't, that lesser area youth will still influence your west end. It, that, that, that impoverished child, you, you think you're neglecting them and they don't have anything to do with you, but yet they will eventually curve, they, they will eventually, not curve, but influence your growth in your neighborhood or your, your destruction in your neighborhood if you do not invest in every single individual in this city. So we need to start bringing up every single neighborhood. Every single ward needs to come up the same way that the west end ward two is coming up, the same way that the ward one is coming up. You have to have the same, like a ward one of Virginia Jordan at, at the time, she had pushed for infrastructure. And there was, I think, one point nine or one point eight million dollars of infrastructure that was for repaving and drainage in, in Ward One. This was right before Taylor Nield had took over, which Taylor nailed up all four, one hundred percent. But at the end of her, her term, basically, she had pushed for that. Well, in my opinion, I have a house in Old Town in Ward One. It's a waste of money. So you're putting new pavement and you're putting drain boxes in, but you got old drain lines underneath. Why are you adding drainage to old lines and not replacing the drain lines? Well, the same money that you're in, you know, investing in, in wasting, invest that in the south end. Invest that over there by Lamar to build up that neighborhood that actually is catered to around our major and our only university. Now come over here to Magnolia in the north end and invest that onto Magnolia to build a, a better infrastructure around this part of town where you can introduce new businesses like Shea Baby over there off of, I think it's Taylor, right on the corner, Little Eatery over there from some guys that I didn't grow up with, but I grew up around. Yeah, Shea Baby, you know? So I mean, you know, like, like I say, introduce the same what you're doing in the west end. Introduce that all the way around Beaumont. Introduce what you're doing in Ward One. Introduce that to the south end. Introduce that to the east end over there by the port, Dusset and, and Madison. Do the same. Don't sit here and care to two or one into town. Owen Samuel's, in, in my opinion, hadn't put out a good fight, even though he's been the, the Ward Three, Ward Three incumbent for years. I remember growing up or, or first driving. And I pointed out that the, off of Beaumont Drive, they finally had the, the little stretch from, I think, Landry to Margot, that little curve, right? Whenever you enter down Beaumont Drive, they just now paved that area. And it had been at least twenty years that people in that neighborhood have been driving on a tore-up, unleveled, bumpy road. So is it that the city manager, Kyle Hayes, is not investing in black communities the same way that he's doing in white communities or predominantly richer communities? Or is it also the ward members that are above those areas are not fighting hard enough to get what they deserve for their citizens? You know what I mean? Or their, their, their constituents in that area? Whose fault is it? I think that the whole thing needs to be changed. I think the incumbents need to be changed out, and that's up to the voter, the voter. So not just the ones that are voting, but the ones that don't vote, that sit there and say, I don't have time. We have plenty of time. We have early elections and we have day of election voting, right? So I mean, what, where's the, where's the problem? Why are we still putting in the same incumbents that aren't doing anything for our city? And then those same incumbents are backing a city manager that's getting paid three hundred and sixty-three percent higher than above average of, I, I believe this was quoted for the whole nation, not just for our, for our, our population. So if our, our population is popping at one hundred and sixteen thousand, something like that. So we have a guy that's getting paid three hundred and sixty-three percent higher than above, you know, above the average of somebody that would be getting paid the same in Kansas, in Minnesota.
This is not, it's just, just not the pay, is it? But it's, it's the stagnant of the city and as this city.
Exactly. Exactly.
Right.
Right. If, 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 if you're worth the pay, if you're Michael Jordan, you get paid the Michael Jordan salary. You don't get paid more than what's necessary for your position and then, and, and then you have a lack of in your department. You know, normally, hey, if I went and worked at McDonald's and I'm doing fries and I'm burning fries, they're going to fire me. That's just how the game goes. If you're not doing your job, you need to move on. You need to go cashier or you need to go flip burgers, one way or another. But you cannot continue to get paid fries and fries is, I heard a joke, I say fries is the, 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 the best or, or the most important position. Why? Because bags, every bag, right, requires a bag of fries in it, right? To move the, move the people along. So therefore, if that's the most important position, which the city manager is the most important position, because in our charter, the city manager actually controls all the spending, all the job, all this, all that. Everybody is underneath him, but yet he still has the city council telling him what he can or cannot do, but yet he still has the, the trickle effect of what, right? So, so if, if you're the most important job, how are you failing at it and you're still getting paid higher than everybody nationwide? It doesn't add up.
James, you've been, if you was elected, and if you was elected as City Council at Large, what difference would you make for the city of Beaumont? What, 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 what would you do to grow this city? Because it's stagnant with growth, it's stagnant with jobs, it's stagnant with infrastructure, it's stagnant all over the place. That's a lot, that's, that's, that's a lot of issues that you have, you're walking into. What make, what make you think that you can make a difference at being a city councilman at large?
We, we have multimillionaires down here. We have plenty of companies down here. We have, we have plenty of individuals that, you know, like, like A.J. Turner and me, we're talking yesterday. We have athletes that come from here, right? I mean, we have all kind of potential. We have actually private investors that, that the city of Beaumont actually is not looking into using. We have smart, intelligent individuals that have great ideals that push all these, these, you know, ideals towards the city for free. But the city is stuck on four hundred thousand dollar studies and one point nine million dollar studies. You got citizens that want to invest in the city.
Yeah, wasted money.
Yeah, yeah. You got, you, you got, you got citizens that want to give you ideals. And why aren't we taking them? They're free. You don't have to pay a dime for them. I've introduced plenty of plans to the city myself that have been bypassed, infrastructure plans. So let, let, let's say for one, one that I brought up a while back. So both the city and DD six, both of them are looking into trying to transport water from the west end to the east end for flood mitigation. So where are they going to, where are they going to transition it from? So somebody had brought up, I think it was Mike Getz brought up, or, or Dr. Majalani had brought up, well, we're going to tear up, or we have an ideal of tearing up college, College Street being the widest street and go ahead and transferring the water down that way. But whenever you hit MLK, where are you going to go? Are you going to go up, over or under MLK? Because at that point in time, right, right, right at college, it dips down. So then are you going to go through somebody's neighborhood and tear down people's homes? Then you got to buy the houses out? You know, what are you going to do at that point where, where you get to MLK? They're not thinking. What they're, what they're doing is causing more problems. I told them this, two things. Go ahead.
No.
I, I told them two things. I, I, I said, I said, why don't you take Delaware, right? And you can tie in Dishman, you can tie in the Dishman Flood, Dishman Soccer Field, right? You can tie in the, the retention, retention pond at Dishman, which is the, the whole soccer field. If you, if you visit out there, the dip down, that's the actual flood control. So you, you can tie in the soccer field, you can tie in the hike and bike trails that are flood, flood mitigation or retention ponds. You can tie in the one behind Chevrolet, Chevy over there at the East State Freeway. You can tie in all of these with going down Delaware. Right. Yes, all the way down. And at that point in time, you can add sidewalks all the way from the Natures River all the way down to the west end. You can connect entire Beaumont by making now Delaware a hike and bike from one end, you know, to the other. You can have with wheelchair accessibility, which Beaumont lacks in a lot of areas. Whenever they start doing streets, Seventh Street has actual telephone poles in the middle of the sidewalks. Their planning is, is, excuse me, poor at the, at the, at the least of words. But you could go ahead and like I say, back to Delaware, you can go to Delaware, you can pre-cut this road, all the cement area. You can pre-cut it into squares. You can then come back as you go, cut, move on, don't do nothing to it. And then as you're digging it up this way, you're just digging up pre-cut concrete. And only the concrete areas unless you take the asphalt areas that are probably asphalt over concrete, and you can scrape them with the machines that actually clear the street. They have a, a machine that grinds off the top of the, the street and gets down to the concrete. Then you'll have more concrete. What I'm getting at is you can take these concrete blocks, you can dump them into the Natures River at the Riverfront Park, which at one point in time was a nineteen million dollar projected project. And you know how projects go. They never end up being nineteen million. They end up being twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five million. If you take two birds with one stone, take that concrete up, dumping it into the front Riverfront Park, you could be building back the Riverfront Park at the same time that you can go ahead and be pulling up Delaware, putting in conveyance tunnels that link up every single retention pond in the west end, which they both, they both, DD six, which is the, the entity per se that, that controls all our flood mitigation and controls, I think it's, I think it's like seventy percent of Jefferson County flood mitigation or, or, or water transferring. So you can take that water all at one time, send it down Delaware. You can have a brand new road all the way in the north end or, or north east end toward the river.
East, yes, just to the river. East, East of Eleventh Street to the river. With James, let me let the audience know that, that we're talking to James Ella Junior. He's a candidate for City Council at Large for the city of Beaumont, Texas. And, and at the, at Large position, there's two votes. You get two at-large seats that's available. So it's going to be very interesting. So now that we have said that, let me get back to you, James. We've got a few more minutes left. What is your take on the SSOI agreement the city has with TCEQ?
I, I don't understand it. I don't how, I, I don't understand how the city of Beaumont, after a lack of accountability already to the sewer and water, which it, it would really be on the sewer side and wouldn't be on the water, even though we keep on having brown water and water line breaks, it, that still wouldn't comply or wouldn't apply to, to that. It would only apply to the, the sewer side, I believe. I, I don't agree with a ten-year, basically grace period. Now supposedly, you can still report and they are still responsible for any kind of sewer. Uh I I've contacted the TCEQ on a uh sewer uh uh issue over on Lawrence Drive. A lady and she's actually uh uh dealing with a handicap issue right now because of knee knee surgery, something like that. But uh I I contacted them. She's contacted TCEQ and we were talking about it uh on Chris Jones's uh uh site earlier on his webcam uh website earlier, uh that uh TCEQ Beaumont uh is not gonna be the contact any further. It's gonna be the Austin number directly to the Austin number, because uh Beaumont seems to have uh 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 been in cahoots with them. Uh not not a conspiracy theory, this is just straight up, that you can call the Beaumont location and you can report everything you want. But it seems like I keep on getting a, oh, we don't have the track of that. We don't have the track of this. Uh we don't have records of uh of you calling. Uh whenever I provide emails showing uh from the lady, the same lady, it has reported the same problem over a year ago. It still hadn't, you know, wasn't addressed. Uh the city of Beaumont keeps on going out running a camera. Uh they go out there and say, oh, nothing's wrong. And then months later, not even on heavy rainy days, it's just sewer overflowing. She's had uh basically what I can uh uh compare to uh the Beverly Hills Billies. Uh uh this is sickening, but uh uh she had a spurt, almost like an oil, uh like like I say, oh, Jed had shot the the ground and the oil was percolating up out of the ground. She actually had sewer percolating out of the ditch. I mean, who wants to wake up in the morning, go to work each day? And and she actually works for a a a environmental uh agency or or a environmental company that does cleanups at uh refiners. So she knows she is well within her rights uh for reporting to this TCEQ. This is not a a minor, you know, minor incident. This is an ongoing issue and the TCEQ has been slow or no going on acting on some of these issues that are really, like I say, really disgusting uh to wake up and uh and find wastewater in your front yard, condoms, female uh female hygiene products, uh uh toilet paper, any and everything popped up in your front yard. You shouldn't have to be dealing with this. So uh no, I I don't think that the city of Beaumont is uh is getting the the due diligence from TCEQ to solve problems, like they're not being forced into uh taking care of these issues that they have.
Okay, well, let me ask you this. Um what about economic development? I'm I'm.
I was just gonna say, we need, what about jobs? What are we gonna do?
You know, well, I mean, we, there are jobs here, but what I think you, what do you want to say, you're talking about diverse, diverse jobs.
And I'm also talking about retaining the people that we're training, the younger people, and making sure that they don't take their talents and their education elsewhere. And how are we gonna retain young people here? We can talk about let's talk about economic development first and then we'll talk about something.
I I like to get into economic development because uh it is very important that we have some type of economic development here. Um and I'm really high into that and I'm really pushing that. Uh when I uh when I ran for a city at large, a councilman at large two years ago, that was one of my main points was um economic development. How can we grow our city? How can we bring amusement parks or entertainment parks or things like that to to hold on to our young adults that's here with us right now? Something to to maintain um identity. We don't, Beaumont, Texas, do not have an identity.
Right, right, right. We don't, we don't, yeah. We don't have anything that draws us here and keeps us here. We have uh.
So what is your, what is, what do you have in, what creative ideas? I don't wanna get, I don't wanna give you, give your game plan away, but do you have any creative ideas that we can do to grow or help, that what you're gonna do, not this, what are you gonna do to help us grow the city?
I would love to uh have a better platform than just as a normal citizen. I take being a council member would be more of a connection to bring more individuals together as as a mouthpiece. Somebody looks at a councilman as somebody to go to. That is your leader. That is somebody you can go to with an ideal, a purpose, a plan. Uh and even if it's not good, at least it can be addressed to see if somebody else can improve on it a little bit more. Uh I I take on uh the responsibility of the voices of people uh to to uh bring forth at least an effort to try and improve in whatever area I can. That said, uh I would like to, myself, I would like to uh get back to uh investing in the youth. And I don't mean just that in a broad term. I mean, as in, why are we not doing more uh like vocational programs per se where we can get uh I I'll speak on it from my own point of view, uh from my own life. Uh I didn't have, my my father wasn't involved with me as in growing up uh uh building stuff. That's my dream. That's my, that's my, that's my niche. That's my thing. Uh I I put my hands into remodeling and and home stuff and and this is not bragging on my my part. I love it. This is where where that's that's where I'm meant to be, right? So each and everybody is gonna have their own little niche, right? Well, if we can find kids with a receptive mind, and I'm not just talking about, you know, privileged kids, I'm not talking about kids that, you know, have the best of this or the best of that. I'm talking about kids that don't have nothing, sometimes their most thirstiest minds that will soak up every piece of knowledge that you give them. So you take those same kids that are uh soaking up uh street life, those are the best entrepreneurs. That's the, that's the best ones that have the best game plan on how to uh provide a uh better society or a better city. You just gotta feed them the right stuff, you know? You gotta feed them uh uh job opportunities at a young age. I mean, in, I think it's like Japan, across seas, other areas, uh other developed countries, uh they're investing in their children at a young age to try and grow them into a particular thing that they want, like a a vocational program uh with our kids uh at a high school level. Well, why not let's start at high school level or even middle school level and start introducing kids uh in Beaumont to start doing Beaumont jobs? I mean, why not uh start getting with community leaders that are already here, that already wanna help out? Uh uh our councilmen should be more receptive of uh bringing about change. Uh uh not just on a higher level with getting jobs here, let's start training. Let's start getting kids prepared for jobs if they're here or if they're not here. Uh at least we'll start having that that mindset for children to uh to grow into a job that they may love or like. Therefore, you knock out also a crime issue, you knock out a poverty issue. If you already inst- uh instill in a child's mind a work ethic, then you won't have to have a a child whenever they're just now getting out of high school, like, well, I don't know what I wanna do, you know? Uh I had a a mindset a long time back whenever I was younger to actually want to work for myself or I wanted to go into the service. Uh I couldn't go into the service because I had a heart condition and uh and I had surgery whenever I was seventeen years old. So I didn't have that opportunity to be able to qualify. Uh so I ended up working for myself. Uh after working for others, I ended up working for myself, been in business for eleven years. Uh so like I say, oh, if we start instilling a little bit of structure into the youth and giving them better opportunities of knowledge, doesn't even have to go anywhere. It it could go in one ear and out the other. Whenever I was doing a volunteer uh job over at the Shorty Center over at Beaumont uh uh in Beaumont over on A Street uh uh and almost Fanning next to uh uh the M H M R uh clinic, uh I was doing a remodel or a demo and rebuilding the bathroom for them. Uh we had sheet rock going up on the wall. Well, I took that moment to drag all the kids in from the playground and let them come watch me cut sheet rock and just show them how. Those type of things is what I would like to also do at my own property uh over here. I would like to also show uh uh back to our roots, growing our own vegetables, growing our own trees, you know, providing fruits and nuts and everything else. Uh why is, I bring up questions about why is the city of Beaumont planting oak trees and crepe mortars around town? Fine, that's that's nice. They're beautiful. Uh but yet we're not producing uh uh nut trees that humans can consume. We're not showing, you know, others uh about uh food growth uh uh at a local level. We're still buying from stores. We're shutting down folks that.
I hate, I don't mean to cut you off, but we're, our time just got up, but I wanted to let you, uh I I'd like to let let the latest that our audience to know that we're speaking with you tonight and you're gonna be joining us again during the uh
Yes, sir.
as we have a uh uh forum uh with candidates forum. And we'd like all the candidates to come aboard and we're just gonna have a forum to make sure we know who we, the candidate that we choose to to know the candidate a little bit better than what we do. But uh I'd like to thank you again for joining us and I
I appreciate it.
Again, James, we're talking to James Ella Jr., candidate for City Council at Large. He's running in one of the two seats that's available, that's open uh uh for this May two thousand and twenty-one election. So people, he has not officially, um he's not officially uh candidate, but he will this week. So um I thank you, James, uh for joining us and Madonna, I speak as I don't know, she's gonna probably say something herself, but we wanna invite you back again that we enjoyed your job, your 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 time with us. And I wanna let everybody know that uh if you like our show, you can join us on uh Knowledge is Power Podcast Live on Facebook, Twitter, um YouTube, Spotify, uh Google Play. We're all over the place. Uh and if you're watching it on YouTube, tap down the little subscribe button until you like us and we we'll see you then. So on Sunday coming, I I'd like to uh let LaDonna tell us who our guest next Sunday.
On Sunday, we're gonna have another candidate at large. We're gonna have A.J. and we'll get to dive in deep with some of his platform and his ideals for the city of Beaumont. I am super excited about Mr. James Ella Jr. coming on and giving us a bit of his platform, sharing his ideas, leading us into this world so that we can get to know him and see who's running, why they're running, and what a difference they feel like they can make. I am actually impressed. I learned a lot tonight. I heard I heard you speaking some language that would resonate with me and people in my age group, and I'm proud to say that you even considered it, because oftentimes you look at people and you think, well, we don't matter to them, or this area of town doesn't matter, or they're not, they don't care. And I'm happy to hear you say that all of Beaumont can come up at one time and all of Beaumont should be served. And you're actually against serving one community versus another or putting more into one and letting others community, you know, wars fail, different things of that nature. We needed, this was a breath of fresh air. I I'm glad. I look forward to seeing you again.
Okay, James Ella Jr., candidate for City Council at Large of Beaumont, Texas. And next Sunday, we will have A.J. Turner, who is also a candidate for City Council at Large. Remember, people, you vote for two at-large seats that's available, that's open. And on Tuesday, join us, all you from Port Arthur, Texas, everyone in the Golden Triangle. We're gonna have the legendary coach of the Lincoln Bumblebees. Uh Coach Joe Washington Senior, along with Little Joe Washington and Kenny Washington. They're gonna be joining us next Tuesday. We talk, we flashback on the good old days of football in the Golden Triangle. There we go. Thank you so much for joining us, Knowledge is Power Podcast Live. Uh and you know, you, we forgot that speech, but that's okay. We'll come back next time.
You jumped all over it. You were talking tonight, baby.
Thank you, James. I appreciate you guys, man. I I wish you all, I wish you all the luck that you uh
Good luck.
Good luck, okay?
Thank you for watching Knowledge is Power Podcast Live. Be sure to like and subscribe to all Knowledge is Power social media pages.